And we'll be on. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the school board meeting of November 4th, 2020. Today, the board just finished participating in a closed risk management session and will now begin the special meeting. Please stand for the pledge to the flag led by Dr. Fanoi. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Mrs. Bass, please call the roll.
District one Barbara McQuinn.
Here. Here.
Mark Murray might have to turn his mic back on. Please ask Mark Murray. There you go. Now I can hear you Barbara. District two Chuck Shaw.
Yep.
District three Karen Brill.
Here.
District four Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District five Frank Barbieri, Appleton. District six Marcia Andrews.
Here.
District seven Deborah Robinson.
Here.
The record show we have a quorum. As you can see, Mr. Barbieri is not here today, and it is important if we can to select or designate somebody on the board to serve as vice chair during this meeting. So I know that today is Mrs. McQuinn's birthday, so we want to wish her a very happy birthday. And I will take volunteers. I saw Mrs. McQuinn's hand go up first. So anybody else? Without objection then, could we please designate Mrs. McQuinn to serve as vice chair during this meeting? Is that what your hand was out for, Mrs. McQuinn? No?
Okay, let's make sure this is very clear. My hand up was for something specific because of previous comments that have come before our board in the last, I don't remember when. I think pre-COVID. Anyway, I would like to nominate Mrs. Whitfield to serve as vice chair for today. Look, I see none.
We have a nomination for Mrs. Whitfield to serve as vice chair for today's meeting. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Brill. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Six zero. Congratulations, Mrs. Whitfield. And just hope that we don't go into technology crisis during this meeting. And for the public, I am still working remotely, as is Mrs. Bass. So today, in attendance at our meeting is the superintendent Teresa Michael, our inspector general, our general counsel, Sean Bernard, and Mrs. Baez is in attendance at the board office. So we are working with, three of us, are two of us working remotely, and the rest of the board there. So for everybody, please realize that this may be a little bit of a challenge as we go through. If the technology works fine, we will get through this meeting very well. If not, we will. Again, happy birthday, Mrs. McQuinn. And I understand we're actually having your birthday celebrated today on your birthday. So congratulations for that. Viewers and listeners can access this meeting today by either watching on Comcast Channels 234 and 235, U-verse Channel 99, or by using the YouTube link on our webpage at PalmBeachSchools.org. We also offer a listening only option, which the public can access by calling 561-357-5900, or toll free at 1-866-930-7015. The meeting ID is 15618801124. We will now call this special meeting ordered at 2:23 PM on November 4th and 2020, and Mrs. Bass has called the roll. Also, today, please be aware for everybody, board members, raise your hand if I don't see you and you want to ask questions. And then Mrs. Bass and Mrs. Baez will also be able to communicate with me on this as we go through this meeting. This meeting is being transcribed by closed captioning, so remember to speak clearly and loudly. And now we move, we'll move into the agenda. The first item is a review or approval of minutes. We have none. Item two is the chairman adding any items for good cause. There are no items that are being added. Dr. Fanoi, adding any other, any items being added?
No, sir, we're not adding anything today.
Okay. Any items to withdraw?
Yes, sir, we're withdrawing CS1 Covenant Arts Academy initial charter contract.
All right. CS1 is withdrawn. Any items that the board would like to pull? Mrs. Bass, I think you had some items that have been pulled at this point.
Yes, ELR1, FMT1, PG1.
Can you repeat those for everybody?
Yes, ELR1, FMT1, PG1.
Are there any other items anybody wants to pull? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Mrs. Brill. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries six zero. Superintendent's comments?
Yes, sir. I'd like to begin by recognizing an outstanding accomplishment. Thirty-two of our district operated schools in Palm Beach County will be honored virtually tomorrow for earning the distinction of achieving five-star status. The five-star school award is presented annually to those schools that have shown evidence of exemplary community involvement. There are several benchmarks that must be met, including student community service, volunteerism, business partnerships, and more. There is no question that family and community involvement is a priceless investment in the success of our students. I invite you to watch the virtual awards ceremony on the Education Network Comcast 234 or ATT U-verse 99 at 6:00 PM tomorrow. The celebration will also be streamed on the district's website. Speaking of celebrations, earlier today, we surprised three outstanding teachers from HL Johnson Elementary School. They are the first group this school year to be recognized as part of the district's Thank A Teacher recognitions. We're surprising three teachers from one school every other week, and we will continually rotate schools throughout the district. The theme this year is Thank A Teacher on tour, as we celebrate teachers who keep going the distance. If you would like to nominate a teacher or simply or simply send a teacher a message of thanks, please fill out a Thank A Teacher form located on our district's homepage. I also like to remind parents, guardians, and students joining us today that the window for choice applications is now open. There has never been an easier way to experience all of our district operated schools have to offer. By visiting PalmBeachSchools.org/soucase, you can take a virtual tour of our more than 300 choice and career programs and access applications. These programs range in interest and grade level, with opportunities to start working toward a specific career path as early as elementary school. The school district of Palm Beach County is your best choice. Before I wrap up, I'd like to share a short video with you. Last Friday, Ms. Whitfield and Ms. Andrews joined me at Wellington High School for the opening game of the high school football season, and for the dedication of a new shared use stadium with the Village of Wellington, a stadium which Ms. Andrews was very instrumental in supporting and planning. If we could play the video at this time.
Well, let's be honest, there's some, I didn't think we were gonna make it here. I mean, I think there was a lot of hurdles to go through, but let me be clear. The team, our athletic director, our coaches, our principals, they wanted this so bad. These are the signals of the fall. Rituals and traditions of our high schools are important. In this COVID era, it's been very difficult for our kids. So this is a step for us to get some normalcy in their lives. Again, not perfect, but we're gonna do this as safe as we can as possible, but it is very exciting. So glad you're here.
I'm very excited to be here tonight. This is the inaugural game for our Wellington High School, a brand-new field in partnership with the Village of Wellington. I think it's just such a wonderful thing. You can see the great weather, the kids are excited, the parents are here, and I'm just, I'm so pleased. I'm just so pleased to be out here and to see athletics getting back in. Our children need this, they need the activity.
You see, players have been practicing, cheerleaders have been getting ready, they have bands behind me. So that piece, this does me proud.
What a beautiful night, and what a beautiful partnership with the school district of Palm Beach County and the Village of Wellington.
Extracurricular activities, sports, and academics are all one. It makes the total child. So it's just so exciting to be here.
My head goes out to all the coaches, the athletic directors, they've been planning this for months to try to do this as safe as possible. And I'm just excited for our kids, man. They get to demonstrate the skills that they've been working on probably their whole young lives. And so football's back, baby, and I'm excited for it.
It was such a treat for students and staff alike to return to this type of normalcy, and we look forward to the rest of the season. Mr. Vice Chairman, those are my comments for today.
Thank you very much. And I wasn't able to be at that game, but I did see the field. And I think the Village of Wellington deserves so much credit for what they've done and that partnership with the district. Board member comments? Mrs. McQuinn?
Mine will be short. It seems like Monday was so long ago, but versus what I asked for on Monday. This is primarily directed to all staff members in this building. I don't think there are a ton of public listening in right now, but I know a lot of staff is. And on your birthday, I get this great cupcake, and typically you get birthday cake. I'm going to use this time to eat a little humble pie for my outburst that I listened to again toward the end of our meeting on Monday, when I think I blurted out emotionally that I don't trust anyone. So I do, and I appreciate the work. It's a good lesson to remember that during times of stress and you're coming to the end of it, that we sometimes say things we don't mean and are certainly out of order. So please accept my apology, and I will certainly do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Whitfield. Mrs. Whitfield. No comments?
I'm sorry, Mr. Shaw, if you said it was my turn.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Whitfield.
So I just wanted to really briefly say a quick note on that Wellington High School football game. I am not really a football fan. And so Dr. Fanoi was spending a lot of time trying to explain to me about what I was looking at. And I try my very best, I really do. He was trying to explain to me the different sides and what they were doing. And so, I mean, you can see how far behind I was. But it was an absolutely beautiful night, and I'm sure Mrs. Andrews will talk a little bit more about what is happening out there, because this is really her baby and her project that she's worked on. But I just want to say how impressed I was with the work from Village of Wellington. To have this kind of a partnership in this community, it is, it's a dream location. The facilities that are going in, we got a tour after the kickoff of the game. We got to go and see in the back all the improvements that are being made. And I feel like everyone in Wellington should be proud to have this in their community. It really is just a state-of-the-art facility. The field is gorgeous, and all the facilities that are going on in the back, it's going to be a boon for that school. And I just want to say a huge thank you to everyone that worked on that project. It's something that I would love to see at more schools in our district. So if anybody else is interested in seeing how that works, I think we should take other communities out there to see what kind of partnerships can happen. It really is just absolutely beautiful. So I want to say a huge thank you to everyone, and I'm so glad I got to go there. I told Mrs. Andrews on our ride, I think this is the most fun I've had in six months. So just being out there and riding around on the golf cart, it was wonderful. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Brill?
Thank you. And so I think I myself and probably my colleagues are worn out from Monday, and then on top of that, Election Day. And so to all of our teachers out there, administrators, as we watch democracy in action, what a fabulous time for civics lessons in our classrooms. It's going to be interesting. We're going to be seeing a lot going on around this nation, but it's a good opportunity to let our children know how important it is for them to vote, let their voices be heard, and use this as a positive lesson as we watch the next month unfold. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews? Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say I'm just really proud of the Village of Wellington, having been their board member for 10 years now. They have always been proactive with the Keeley-Spinelli scholarships, with thinking out of the box. And when this project came forth, and they introduced it to me, and introduced it to the school board, the school board really moved quickly and accepted the challenge. I want to thank Wanda Paul and her team. You've been working it for a while, and to see the final results the other night was absolutely fabulous. The mission is for our children. To be back in sports was wonderful, but to see that athletic facility, the field, but all of the major improvements, which is coming forth for Wellington High School, one of our oldest high schools, getting the upgrades that's necessary for children. It was a wonderful event. I invite all of you to come out and see the area, the tour, and to see how this is going to make the difference for our children. And today, I had the opportunity to be at HL Johnson Elementary School for the Thank A Teacher Tour, and the communications department. And you do it every time, making the difference for our teachers. HL Johnson had pretty close to 20-plus teachers nominated for Thank A Teacher. They came in, the teachers that received their awards, they were nominated by students and parents, and the principal, the region office was there. It was really a wonderful event. So look for the presentation to be seen on YouTube soon. But truly, it's all about our schools, our communities working together. We're still in a pandemic, but we're making it happen in a positive way. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
No comments at this time.
All right, thank you. That concludes our presentation by board members. Are there any disclosures or abstentions for this meeting? Seeing none, we'll move to speakers. We have no speakers scheduled for today's meeting, so we'll move to the approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything else? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mrs. Andrews, second by Mrs. Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Six zero. That moves into new business. Our first item is ELR1. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the board approve Ryan McDonald's termination of employment effective Thursday, December 3rd, 2020, subject only to appeal under Section 120.569 FS, Section 120.57 FS.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Mrs. Andrews. Dr. Robinson, I think you pulled that item.
Thank you, I did. So this gentleman has alcohol use disorder. Did we at any point refer him to EAP?
I believe so, but I haven't. Good afternoon.
Yeah, I hear you.
Good afternoon. I have the line, she'll be answering that question in regards to whether we provided him with the AP.
Dr. Robinson, this is Vicki Evans-Pere. If I may, I believe that we do forward the EAP packet to anyone who has a violation of the drug-free workplace policy.
Okay, so I'm not going to be supporting this. He was not required to drive as part of his job. I get the whole in the four corners and all that other stuff, you know, but somehow this country has managed to recently, in recent years, recognize opioid use disorder, you know, since the, you know, the demographics changed. But I just want us to be sensitive to the fact that people can have problems that are now known to be medical and not moral, you know, weaknesses, right? And I looked specifically in there to see if we referred him. I did not see it. If I had seen that, you know, maybe I might have a different opinion. I saw that in his PDM, he said, it was, some of it was blacked out, but it appeared to me that he was saying he had been clean and sober since his last arrest. I just am a person that actually does believe in second chances. And so I'm not quite sure. I know this was his second offense, but after the first, we should have sent him to EAP, and I would like that to have been documented.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Brill?
Thank you. And I'm going to agree with Dr. Robinson. This was the one case that I, when I looked at it, it appeared, and this may or may not be true, that he did not understand that he needed, because he was driving and it was not during work hours, that he needed to report that. But I too had that question in my mind, so I appreciate Dr. Robinson pulling it. I do think that the world being what it is, we do need to make sure that we do provide for supports. And if this did not impair him at work or have any impact on his job, I think he does need to have a second chance.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Raise your hand. All opposed? Motion fails three-three with Dr. Robinson, Mrs. Andrews, and Mrs. Brill voting against it. Our next item is FMT1. Dr. Fanoi?
Yes, FMT1. I recommend the board approve the FY 2021 Five-Year District Facilities Work Program.
Motion by Mrs. Brill, second by Mrs. Andrews. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm the only one pulling things today. But, okay, so just a few questions. First, on page 12, I am, I'm gonna assume I'm misreading this, but it looks as though there are no dollars budgeted in the future for improvements of media centers. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Dr. Fanoi?
Yes, Ms. Leanne is right here. If we can turn the microphone on, please.
I'll try to talk very loud. That document is, yeah, it's working, is the state version of our capital plan. The version is, I have complained to DOE for 15 years. It's very difficult to read and very difficult to review. I prepare the document, and I have a hard time understanding it. And DOE builds it the way they want to build it. The intent is to replicate the capital plan, and right now, our capital plan does not include money specifically for media centers. If that's something that we need to put in our capital plan, we can certainly do that. We're about to start our capital plan process again for next year. So if that's a board directive or request, we could certainly look at that.
Dr. Robinson?
Well, I'll wait for my fellow board member's comment.
Mrs. Whitfield. Mrs. Whitfield.
Call Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you. So I just was thinking, this is something that I think we should address as a board during our strategic planning. I agree that it's a need that we think about our media centers and our spaces, but I think this is something that we could, we could talk about more in depth, along with how else we would like to spend our money coming up. So obviously, we should approve this today, but I do think this is a cause for concern in the future.
Any other comments? Dr. Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Dr. Robinson, I think this is great. I was just thrilled to get the upgrades at Glade Central, and I've seen some of the media centers. We've got to do better. I'm walking through some of the others, Pahokee, Wellington High School, and I've talked to the media specialists, and they are asking, when are we going to get some help for our media centers? So it is very urgent that we make sure that we put this as a priority, and just ask the media specialists. They will tell you that there's so much work that needs to be done. I've seen it myself personally.
Hey, Jim. Mrs. McQuinn?
I won't be able to live with myself, or live in North County, if I don't remind us all that William T. Dwyer High School has been requesting for several years now the upgrades to the Panther Den. Thank you.
Any other comments? Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I actually have a list, but, but yeah, I brought that up to ask that we ask staff to do an analysis of the media centers. I'm not here to pick and choose, and I don't even know really honestly how big to dream of, you know, of a new age media center. But I think we should compare whatever that ideal goal is to our current state. And at some point, you know, we'll have to make some tough decisions, but I would like for us to consider the media centers as part of those tough decisions. So I want to move on to page 14. In the revenue, list of potential sources of revenue, there's something called a district equity recognition. Yeah, I would like for us to earn and receive some of that money, so whatever that is, can we look at that?
I'll just point out with the, with the way the revenues work in this document, it's one of the many reasons I don't like it, and it's the reason, one of the reasons the school board approves the capital plan that you're used to seeing. This document also requires that we show there is a quarter mil that can be levied for operating or capital. And we always levy it for operating, because that's where the need is. They show it as a choice, that we're leaving money on the table in this document. There's a lot of things they put in this document for revenues that they say we're not taking advantage of, that we're not legally allowed or entitled to get. So it is a very confusing document.
Is there a potential revenue source that's called district equity recognition?
I will ask. Honestly, I've never seen it. And I just did the training statewide for capital budget throughout the state, and I've never heard of it, so I'll find out.
Okay. Then I would like to go on to page 18. So I actually love this part of the document. I don't know if anybody else does. But I would just ask that in the, in the near future, the board gets an update on our plans for unloading these schools that are currently or projected to be over 100% capacity. And I want to specifically point out Conservatory, Lake Park Elementary, Forest Hill, Meadow Park Elementary, Boca High, John I., and then I ran out of space to list them. But if we could just inform the board, I remember when Mrs. Andrews brought up the whole, the like code red and code yellow in terms of the utilization. And so I think we need to know what, what our current plans are to unload these schools.
We can certainly bring that in. When we do the next capital budget workshop, we're actually making some improvements to our capital plan document and hope to include that as part of the document next year.
Wonderful. And then I'd like to go on if I don't see any other hints. So it says Suncoast is at 89% capacity, which makes no sense to me, when it's 100% choice school and there's a waiting list. So I just would like to figure out, would somebody follow up with the board later why we are, is it 89%? Now, I realize, 89% means something else in the land of COVID. I'm talking about prior to COVID. These, this is prior to COVID, right? And so why, why would we not fill the school at 100% when there's a waiting list? So I would just like follow up on that. And then I think that is it for this item. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Just one quick comment, and I, we saw it in an email that came related to ADA access at our football fields. And I know we have several fields that are, have been around for a long time, especially on the visitor's side. So I would hope that that's something that, that staff, and I'm sure that they are looking at the issues of access that we, that we need to have in our, in our athletic facilities, because it doesn't impact just football, but it would also impact, you know, soccer and some of the other. some of the other sports that are played on those fields. Mrs. Whitfield.
Can I just ask, since we're talking about this section, when you say the actual utilization, are we talking with the kids that are really in the classroom right now? Or is it kids virtually and in the classroom, or what, what is happening when it says right now?
This, this document was, developed prior to COVID, it has nothing to do with that. It has to do with the number of students that are assigned to that school.
Okay.
So there is the actual number of students, and then there's a, a calculation that's done. High school students count as 1.5, I believe. They, they count as more because they change classes. So it's, it's looking at that. It's looking at the physical capacity of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mrs. Brill.
Thank you, and I just, I can cross off the ADA, I don't know the right word now, I just lost it, but being able to make our, our football fields and all of our facilities accessible, I was going to talk to the superintendent about that, so I appreciate your bringing that up, Mr. Shaw, because we do have a lot of older buildings and a lot of older facilities, and at this juncture, I really think that we need to make sure that we bump that up so that we don't have any problems with people being able to access them. So, you know, I know the laws were different. The laws changed in our new construction, we make sure it's ADA accessible, but I would like us to review all of the buildings and facilities and see where we do have gaps, so that we can put those up on a priority list.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next item is PG 1. Dr. Fanoi.
Yes, sir. I recommend the board approve the annual updated Florida Education Equity Act Implementation Plan.
Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Mrs. Brill. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. So, to this report to the state, the state asks different questions every year, and so in, in running through this document, it appears that what they focused on this year was course acceleration, gender equity, and I'm not sure why the IG stuff was, policy was in there, but am I correct that that's, because they usually ask to focus on these particular areas. I want to know that I'm correct on that, or did I miss something?
No, we'll have staff come forward and speak to it.
Yes, that's correct. They send us a template, and each year, the template has certain questions, that's correct. And they ask us to verify that policies have or have not changed, and we have to cut and paste and put those in there. Yes.
Thank you for that. And so then, let me just go to the whole part about acceleration. So I want to be clear before I make my comments on, I think it's page 15 of the document, they have course acceleration. Interestingly, they don't break out females on here, but they have white students, white males, black students, black males, so forth. So what I want to be clear about is what's the numerator and what's the denominator? So let me just say, so for example, for white students in the year 1920, it says 60.9% were enrolled in AP, IB, or ACE. So the numerator, just tell me if I'm wrong or right, the numerator is the number of white students who were enrolled in at least one AP, IB, or ACE course in ninth through 12th grade, and the denominator is all white students in ninth through 12th grade. Is that correct?
So if you look at the, on page 15 at the top, that is your whole there? And then the number, if you look in the column where it says number, the 11,000, that's the number that represents that percentage. Is that what you're asking?
Okay, so, so Mr. Howard is not here. He knows I'm always going to ask what's the numerator and what's the denominator. I just want to be crystal clear.
So the numerator is the 11,396 in the column part, but at the very top, the denominator is the whole there, which is the 18,017.
Right, and so I'm switching from a number problem to a word problem.
Oh.
Okay, so the, the, so I just, like, I think I'm right. Like, I've only looked at these things for 20 years, right? But I just want to make sure.
Okay.
The numerator is, in this example with white students, is the number of white students in grades nine through 12 that took at least one AP, IB, or ACE course in that year. I hear, Dr. Fanoi, you saying?
That's how I read it as well.
Okay, and then the denominator is the total number of white students in grades nine through 12. Okay, I just want to make sure, I've, because I've had people give me some, like, really bizarre things before. So, so what this shows us is that over these, what, four, one, two, three, five school years, we increased the black enrollment in AP, IB, ACE by eight percentage points. The white enrollment increased by 11 percentage points, and Hispanic by 12 percentage points, right? Now, and we had gaps to close for, especially for the black and Hispanic students. I still, I think we fall short for everybody, but, but the point is, is that are we going to have a plan? Because we, like, we've been talking about AP potential for I don't know how many years now. You know, like, and it seems like I really, I recently kind of went on a tirade about this. I don't want to have the same conversation. But, and what I get back is, we're going to do the master board analysis, and so, like, that's one piece, but you know, the low hanging fruit is AP potential. I mean, the college board gives us a list of kids who have demonstrated on a standardized test, with its own racial bias and everything, that they are prepared to be successful in the AP. And like, I just don't understand for the life of me, right? Why are we just not, boom, it seems to me that this is like, this is low hanging fruit, this is like waved a magic wand. I do not understand. And so I, I, I need an answer. I, not, you don't have to give it to me now, you know, I like those long written out answers so I can highlight them and come back, right? But I need a plan, because, I mean, and, and then we're not even talking about, then what's the plan to make sure once they enroll, they're successful? And then we're not even talking about the ones, what I, the ones I call the raise your hand kids, right? Like, my oldest boy, whose middle school guidance counselor told me, don't even bother to apply to Suncoast, and he successfully completed the IB program, got his MBA, and he's a practicing attorney now, right? But she told me, don't even bother to apply? And at that point in time, we did not, you know, he didn't meet all the criteria, because the teachers, all the evaluations and stuff, and I'm, wait a minute, while I'm on my little rant, I'm going to give a shout out, because Art Johnson's sitting back there, and Art Johnson heard this rant many times, and we removed some of those impediments for children to get into IB. But this is what I want to know, when are we going to provide the mechanisms for children to take advantage of these advanced course offerings and provide the support? Because we know that what predicts whether or not you graduate from college in four years is not your GPA, it's not your SAT scores, it is the rigor of the coursework you had in high school. So I just want to know, when are we going to actually do it? Because I'm tired of talking about it. And so we talk about equity, 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 you know, the state comes up with this little document that we have to fill out, which I'm not really sure they even care about themselves, but I care about it. And so, Dr. Fanoi, I'm going to just ask you to bring us a plan, okay? Because it is, just frustrates the living daylights out of me. So we've got the, the kids, the AP potential, we've got, you know, the other kids who are being successful, and then we've got the, the raise your hand kids. We, I mean, and, and then how are we going to make sure that they're successful when they're, I, it, it is such low hanging fruit, and we're not doing it, and it, I'm, okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to quiet myself right now, but I've got some other items on this equity plan, but I'll hush for now.
Any other comments?
Mrs. Andrews, Mr. Shaw.
Mrs. Andrews? Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Robinson, for bringing that up. And just for Mr. Oswald and the team, Dr. Fanoi, I just remembered at the council last year, and I think it was Dallas, and there were several others that really did an excellent presentation. This work is being done, and you don't have to recreate anything. We are active members of the council. I think you could put a call through and get some information immediately, because I just heard it a year ago, and I was impressed with what others are doing on this level. So if I can help you in any way with working with council and looking into it, I saw it just, not this past conference, but the last one, being presented, I think Dallas and several other districts are, were on the cutting edge.
Any other comments, Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So, so I know part of the problem with this is the institutional resistance, because let's be honest, we have employees in various positions that don't believe that all, all children can, right? And, and so we're going to need to figure out how we're going to deal with that too, right? Because I think, well, what I hope, what I pray is that the people that sit up here and the people sitting down there believe that every child can if we give them the access and we give them the support. Now, if we don't, then I think I need to, like, have some conversations with people to figure out, you know, what's going on, but, but I hear that in this room repeatedly. But I also see and hear about the barriers that exist out there in our schools, and so somewhere along the line, we're going to have to get real with the resistance that some people have about the abilities of some students, right? Okay, I'm going, I'm going to try to let that go.
Real quick, Dr. Robinson, I think, you know, I think the most, a lot of valid points, but AP potential, again, with all their flaws, they give you the names of the kids. I think when I was a high school principal, I'm sure many of the people here, that, that's your starting block, if you know who they are. And now, we all know that the, the wraparound services, the wraparound supports is what, that's the other piece, because, you know, as those classes become challenging, especially if a child has never been given access to rigorous coursework prior to, we almost have to approach it the same way you would remediation. So those same after-school tutorials, those same, those same approaches. So I agree, and I, and I will be sitting with staff and talk, Keith, you have something to add?
Yeah, based on feedback from last year, we went through this process and made significant changes to the master board analysis process. There are a number of new reports that we're using throughout the year-long process of master board, that includes an equity report to look at students who are underrepresented in certain courses and have the AP, the potential, similar to the AP potential. We've seen significant increases in enrollment with those underrepresented populations this year. It just doesn't reflect on this particular report, will show up in next year. And I talked to the superintendent about potentially bringing that too for a board workshop, so that we can go in much more detail around what that process looks like, the report, and also how that has changed the way the principal's looking at their master board.
Let me add something, I think, yes, we did have that conversation, and we will press it, but I think we also have to be clear and honest around, it's one thing to get kids in, it's another thing to support them and keep them there. And so, you know, that, I think that would be another reporting mechanism to see how many kids are sustaining their enrollment in these courses, and then seeing how it matriculates over the course of the years. And so I think there's definitely some hard conversations to be had around gatekeepers, I guess is the term that I would use.
In fact, because I think it's important too, that as we talk about, you know, the master board analysis, the work that we've done in the past year, that is not reflective of this report, is the work that we've done with Impact Florida.
Through the grant, where we're working with four other counties, in Palm Beach County, our problem of practice was around the master board analysis and what we were doing for this upcoming year, to where they came and witnessed that, to where we had student voice, and that work was done there at John I. Leonard High School. And we're continuing to work with Impact Florida.
Yeah, so I think it is, it's incumbent upon us, making sure the board and the community know the work that has happened. But again, I think, when we think about our strategic planning process, we can't look at this work as one and done. Like, you have to remember, you, this is, the sustainability beyond putting a bunch of kids in coursework, that's, you can get that data set, and it's going to look good, and we'll celebrate it. It's that four-year trajectory, and the number of classes kids take over time, and their success rates. You know, I think for those of us that took that, you know, and honestly, it was a gamble in the early years, we're putting freshmen in AP courses, your goal wasn't necessarily for them to pass the test, it was to experience an AP course, develop, increase their own self-esteem around it. Because I remember as a principal, you would hear kids make comments like, well, those classes are for the white kids. They don't even, they didn't even believe they could participate in those courses. So I think it's, it's that sort of tracking kids based on the work we're doing in Impact Florida and the, and the master board analysis, but I think we got to push it a little bit fur, oh, a lot further. I think it's the whole trajectory of that kid's experience, and then see how it manifests itself with increased SAT, you know, you know, SAT and ACT scores, college interest rates, where they're getting accepted to college. I think their success in dual enrollment courses, which would be equal. So I think there's a lot more digging, and I think, again, creating, I guess essentially what I'm trying to say is, one thing to create a plan, which we have, I think the next part of the plan is what I would call the sustainability plan, is how do you sustain that work and increase those options for kids over time? So I, I agree, and we'll definitely take note of that, and we'll, we'll continue to, can bring you that feedback.
Mrs. Whitfield.
Thanks. I just, you know, as you're talking about this, I have, I keep thinking about my own daughter, who's a seventh grader in Algebra I right now, so she's in the advanced version from being an AMP, so thank you, Dr. Avosa. But I feel like one of the things that I'm seeing through this whole process is how difficult it is for a student when they are in an advanced class to keep up with, you know, learning everything that needs to be learned, if they're trying to do it virtually. And so a lot of the schools that I've visited, we've talked about how we are trying to provide tutoring for these students, so that they can be in a sustainability plan, so that we can have them be successful when they're a part of it. Luckily, you know, my daughter has a dad who's an engineer, so he can teach her math even when I'm stuck, but I feel like not every child's that lucky. So as we're planning our strategic plan, my long-winded answer to get to this, I think we really need to start thinking about, if the world continues to look like this, and we're stuck having half our kids be in virtual, how do we continue to advance them in this process, and what other supports are they going to need? Because I just think we're not, we're not going to, I mean, we're not even getting kids on grade level, I think, on some levels right now, and that's terrifying. So we're talking about putting them forward, I think we're going to have to put more resources to be able to make up for the fact that they're not actually in front of a teacher every day in person.
Well, yeah, and I think, and Ms. Whitfield, I think, as Mr. Burke and, well, all of us realize, that, you know, we have some very interesting conversations post the holidays around what happens with our budget. I think the principals and the principal supervisors spoke with me about two, three weeks ago around what we call the, the lack of engagement for some students in the virtual learning space. And, you know, as you get on calls with the council, great city schools, and other superintendent fads, for me, this is, this is not unique to us. So we're now all in sort of a developmental phase. And I think, you know, one of the things that's become clear, we've got to figure out a way to engage the community in this support lever, you know, our Boys and Girls Clubs, places where, I think I've heard one of the board members speak to sort of these pods that have been created naturally in the community, and figuring out how we can, you know, Dr. Shepherd and her team created the Palm Beach version of Khan Academy. We haven't necessarily advertised it as much as we, we need to, but they've done that hard work. And so, and then you still have Khan Academy, which is a free resource for students as well, that I know my personal child uses as part of those advanced classes. But what, Ms. Whitfield, what you said is, is the part that we've got to figure out, is that some kids have you, or Dr. Robinson, or Ms. Andrews, or the rest of us, as parents who understand that, know how to navigate it, but we have a bunch of kids that have the cognitive abilities, but don't have those support systems, and, and honestly, you know, I was cringing a little bit to the comment Dr. Robinson made about a guidance counselor, but unfortunately, that's a lot more common than we probably want to acknowledge. The, the sort of, you know, you know, Donald Fanoi doesn't have the teacher-pleasing behaviors to participate in certain classes, not that he can't, you know, pass the test or, or can produce. So I think there's a, there's a very rich and honest conversation we have to have collectively, and then creating sort of those sustainability plans that's not a one and done. This is, this is something that we're really going to have to keep an emphasis in, as we think about sort of having this equity lens in our strategic plan, and whatever our, our values and our mission is as a district, because once we do that, then now we can go back and look at our resources. Now, I think the other part of this that you're all hinting at, is we have to have some hard conversations around what comes off the plate. And I think some of our lobbying efforts around, you know, VAM scores, and all these sort of, as Dr. Robinson mentioned, you know, what are the impediments in the district that sometimes cause people to be gatekeepers? And so I, I, I think we're going to have a rich conversation around this.
And Dr. Fanoi, I understand that next week, and there, there is a workshop on this topic for next week? Is that correct?
I don't know the date, but I'll get back to the board.
Okay.
We've moved a lot of things, we've moved a lot around recently. Ms. McQuinn, I think, had, had her hand up for Dr. Robinson, Mr. Shaw.
Just a reminder. I'm so sorry. Just a reminder of something I talked to Dr. Fanoi about yesterday, and actually, it was his thought, but I agreed, and that was, we have to start the rigor in kindergarten. And so this won't be like he said, a one and done. We can try to push kids into higher-level classes, and remember, there's also some teacher resistance, and it isn't because they necessarily think that every kid can't learn. And it isn't because they necessarily think that every kid can't learn at high levels, but sometimes their evaluations depend on that. So it's complicated, and I think that if we really, and I'm not putting aside pre-K because we know it all starts there. But we have a lot of control beginning when our kids enter our kindergarten grades. And, and let's look at the rigor there. And there's some really good work being done across the district. And I'm very specific with schools pairing, like with Glade Schools and Wellington Schools. And making sure that a student's papers, I'm referring now to elementary school, not necessarily kindergarten, but that's where I want to go, is teachers exchanging the papers. I can't remember what this is called. Um, wow, Alison Adler will smack me later. But it is making sure that if I say a Level Four paper from a Pioneer Park student is a Level Four paper from Wellington Elementary, that's what we have to start doing. We can't have low expectations and then expect the students come third grade or 11th grade to all of a sudden be able to perform at that level. So putting my plug for our plan, being very specific to beginning no later than kindergarten. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So, um, Mrs. McQuinn, I'm glad you remembered that. Because that was actually, it was called Standards in Practice, right? And it, and it was brought to Palm Beach County School District by the Coalition for Black Student Achievement in partnership with Education Trust. And it was a way to make sure that ev- that everybody had the same standards that they were working with, right? I don't, I'm not quite sure what has happened to that. If, I think we think we're handling it through the scope and sequence and other things, but I, you know, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I, but I do think that there are different expectations in different places. Um, I'm glad you threw pre-K into your comments, Mrs. McQuinn. And, because let me just tell you how, I'mma just say it, the system is so rigged. So, when I was on Early Learner Coalition, representing this, this, um, board and, um, started the Riviera Beach Pre-K Collaborative. And at that point, I was comparing the pre-K work I was seeing with that that my elder's granddaughter was receiving. Um, and, and it was like two years difference. I mean, so what I did was I took some of my granddaughter's work, um, and passed it around to people and said, "What grade do you think this is?" And she was four years old at the time, and nobody said four years old. Um, some said K, some said 1, one person even said second grade. And it just blew my mind. And then in looking at the, the, uh, curriculum that this child, the early childhood centers that are dependent upon subsidized childcare, um, have to choose from, I really reached a conclusion that that curriculum was dumbed down, right? And so one of the things we did through the Riviera Beach Pre-K Collaborative, um, and, and thanks to, again, the Senator Bobby Powles, we got money and, and we bought new curriculum for them. And then that was the year that you saw the kindergarten readiness scores in Riviera Beach pop up when everybody else's went down, right? And so, I mean, that's something I think that we can have some influence on. Um, but, but let me just say this, and, and I'm, I'll move on. But, um, part of this is just your belief system, right? And, you know, I, and I just have to reflect upon, um, there's some people that I'm very, I can, I can name each one of my, my children and which, which educators had such a great impact in their lives, right? And for my youngest son, one of them was Dr. Gloria Crushfield, who was a principal at Suncos for a while. And when Dr. Crushfield was there, she waved her magic principal wand and said, "Everybody's taking Advanced Placement if you haven't taken it already." And I called her all nervous and everything, and I was like, "Oh, my boy's gonna take AP 'cause, you know, he doesn't do that well on the FCAT." And she, I never forget, she told me, "He's gonna get a C in whatever you put him in. Let him get a C in Advanced Placement." Well, how about he gotta B? Now here's the moment of truth. When the course selection sheet came out, that child of mine sat and signed up for all AP and honors courses. Because now he believes, that's my civil engineer, right? The one who was always not doing well, always coming up with his reasons for not doing his work because he was not engaged in school until that moment in time. Because there was a principal who set the bar, and he rose to the occasion and then he suddenly, suddenly believed in himself, right? And then started using things like Khan Academy to supplement his education, right? Belief is free, right? So I'm just saying. So we have to figure out here as a leadership team, how we say that we believe. Wherever you come from, whatever you look like, whoever your mama is, all that. We know you can do it. And it's almost, almost every child has the ability, right? But the adults fail them. I, I, you know, I'm sorry, I guess I'm just having me a day. But don't bring me an equity plan and then think I'm not gonna say anything because you know I am. But, but I, you know, Dr. Fanoi, I agree with almost everything that you said, and I'mma, I'mma go on to another issue in this equity plan. But I look forward to us in truth addressing this, in truth, right? So I'm moving on. Um, on page forty-three, there's some documentation, there's a chart about diversity amongst our employees. I just want to ask, I know the state doesn't ask for it, but can we figure out, and I think legal's gonna tell me I can't, but can we figure out how we look at the diversity of employees and also include our Haitian Creole employees? Okay, um, now, moving on. So, in this gender equity thing, you know, it's interesting to me. I'm looking at, after the little football video, I'm looking at the, um, the little sports thing. They don't have cheerleading down here. So I guess they, they're not concerned about g- gender equity and cheerleading, right? But let me tell you what I am concerned about. And, and it, it struck another one of my nerves. I have a bunch of little nerves that trigger me, uh, around this stuff because I've been fighting this fight too long, right? Um, but is the makeup of the cheerleading squad? Did y'all notice, did anybody beside me notice the makeup of the cheerleading squad? Now let me tell you why that's important to me. One of my, my husband's golfing buddy's daughter got like five college full-ride scholarships for cheerleading, right? Okay, but that cheerleading squad appeared to be all white, appeared to be. I don't, don't know for certain, I'm not saying. But I'm just telling you, we need to start looking at these things because that's scholarship money that somebody's not getting. And guess what? We need to roll it back, and I actually have a meeting coming up to talk about this. And our after-school clubs or in, in the inner city, are we gonna make sure they have gymnastics? Are we gonna figure that out? Because you gotta flip to get those college scholarships for cheerleading, right? So are we gonna look at the entire pathway and create opportunities for children who by circumstances beyond their control have none? So I'm just, I'm gonna put that out there, right? Um, that's always been a pet peeve of mine. I went to a, a basketball, some big, I don't know, some big basketball game at Dwyer one time and sat there and watched. Almost all the players on the floor were black. All the cheerleaders were white. It wasn't a good look for me. Okay, I'mma move on. So my last, the last thing.
All right, Dr. Robinson, we've got two other board members.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed all that.
All right, Mrs. Brill and then Mrs., um, McQuinn.
Thank you. So as Dr. Robinson was speaking, I think Mrs. Andrews and I might have had a moment of déjà vu about the cheerleaders from when we first got elected. But, um, I, I do want, want to just chime in and say that I know Dr. Robinson is talking about equity for all and just, and I completely agree. And I just want to make sure that, and I know that, that Dr. Robinson means this, but just for staff, that means ESC and ELL. That means every student. Because when we set the buy, bar higher, that's why our ESC students have been doing so much better in their achievement. We have to not exclude anybody. And again, we have to, when we have those, the workshop on equity and really start trying, deep digging in, it's throughout the system. Because we have seen those gaps, Dr. Robinson. We have seen the inequity between the cheerleaders and the people that are playing sports. And it's time that we make sure that we even the playing field for all of our students.
Mrs. McQuinn?
Can't let the cheerleading thing go. I'm not going to explain how, but I can tell you that all those years ago that I left Gardens High, we had, and Gardens High was primarily, um, our black students from Riviera Beach and our white students from Palm Beach Gardens. And, um, I can tell you, we had a very, um, balanced cheerleading squad. But if you're not involved personally with it, what you find is that black cheerleaders, and by the way, there's gender equity there, and there is also a physically handicapped equity there. And I had a great cheering coach, so none of that was an issue. However, my black cheerleaders dropped off because of transportation. And that's a problem. Because, you know, now, oh, well, I can't let a student in my car and I can't, you know. It's, we have to go to what are the barriers to that happening? So I just wanted us to remember that piece, please. Thanks.
And, and if I can, we've, we've spent a lot of time on, on this topic, but the one thing we haven't talked about enough, and it's gotta be part of the planning with the strategic plan and everything, is the training and expectations for our instructional staff. Because none of this is gonna accomplish anything if, if we don't have teachers totally engaged in this process. So, any other comments? Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and, and I go way back to when I was a principal, that I was the sponsor of the PEP squad to get the children ready to be cheerleaders. And I think it's, when I look at it and I go to a school now and I see what it looks like and it's not equitable, I look at the principal, I look at the region superintendents because you all are going to probably more games than I'm going to. So when we're out there as leaders and you see what it looks like, I do expect for you all to have a conversation with the leadership within the school to ask why. And there are a lot of children that want to participate, and it's just like the AP. You've got to seek them out and help them with the process so that they can have opportunities. Because if you don't, they're not going to do it. And many times, they don't think they can do it. So it's just the same thing with the cheerleading. You've got to really be able to identify students and help them. And educate parents. I think the parent piece is real critical. They have high expectations for their children. But it takes the leadership of the school with the parents, working together, to make sure all children get an opportunity for success, equitable success.
Mrs. Brill?
Thank you, and just finally to add to Mrs. McQuinn's comment about the transportation, the other, um, blo- the other barrier that we have with our students who want to participate in sports and cheerleading and, and other after-school activities is the cost. There is a very big cost of participating, and we've got to find a way to even the playing field and to be able to find a way to assist those students so that if their families are not financially able to provide them that access, um, that hopefully some of our community partners can. Because that is a barrier. And I knew that as a single mother, when my daughter wanted to do certain things, we had to pick and choose because we just couldn't afford it. So I'd like to see us find some creative ways working with our partners to level that.
Any other comments? If not, well, Dr. Robinson, final comment, and then let's vote on this plan.
Um, no, not my final comment. I have like two. So, let me just say this, and, you know, I thank you, um, each of you for bringing up the issues about, um, students with disabilities and, and also the, um, ELL students. But let me make this point while we're talking about equity. Um, ELL students and ESC students have specific funding for them, right? Multi-generational African and American students have no specific funding and no, no specific initiatives to address the language differences, right? And so, I just, while each, we, we need to address the needs of each. But let's say that the needs of some has already been recognized. We need to do a better job, but the needs of some has already been funded. The needs of others has not. Now, so the last thing I want to talk about is on, in this equity plan, and y'all know it's coming, is on page forty-four. And let me just pass this out. On the, um, single gender schools. So now what I just passed out and to, um, my fellow board members is this flyer from a community input meeting in December of two thousand twelve for Roosevelt Leadership Academy for Young Men. Now, I've heard all the explanations from everybody about how we got to this state where we're now doing this, um, I guess we're calling it co-ed leadership academy. And that's fine, I don't mind that. But let, let me just make it really clear. The data tells us, every doggone piece of disaggregated data we look at inside the school system and in other school systems says that we are failing to meet the needs of black male students in particular. Now, we are also more and more losing our black females, right? And so I was really, really good with the concept of adding to the Roosevelt Leadership Academy for Young Men and making it, making a leadership academy for young women. I, listen, I am really so good with that. And the times that I have visited this leadership academy, I want you to be clear, it's not all black male students in there, um, but it's Afro-centric. And, and, and when we visited last time, they asked for a program at Palm Beach Lakes High School that they could matriculate to, to support them. It's a sup- it's really supportive. Now, this board, many members on this board will remember how this got watered down already. The plan was, and what this was about, was to have a school district-operated charter school at the historic Roosevelt High School. And the entire school was going to be Roosevelt Leadership Academy for Young Men. We had lots and lots of people in the cafeteria every time we had a meeting about it. There was tremendous interest. And then the board decided, some of the reasoning why I'm still not clear about, but decided that they didn't want to fund that. And so it was salvaged, the concept was salvaged as a choice program at Roosevelt Middle School. And now even that is being watered down. Now, I hope that we are going to do everything we can so that in August of twenty twenty, what year are we in? In August of twenty twenty-one? Like, I don't even know anymore. In August of twenty twenty-one, children will have the opportunity to choose to go to an all-male academy, a female academy, or a everybody academy. But I'm just telling you, the community's not gonna let go of this dream. We know this is part of what we need. And so we can't look at the data, the disaggregated data, over and over again and not address it. And this was just one little baby step, and it's, it's, it's been, it's just been destroyed. And, and, and I just will do whatever I need to do to make sure that this, this vision is reinvigorated in Palm Beach County School District.
Mrs. Brill?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm gonna be curious to see how this, I think that in reading this, Dr. Robinson, I think it's specific in preparing for success beyond the classroom, that I could see it as being single gender. Because historically, when we've done anything else single gender, it's not worked, um, in this district. You know, I don't know if any of you remember Odyssey Middle School wa- went to single gender and that didn't work. And Franklin Academy was single gender. So I'm hopeful that if you do expand this and have the, the academy for young women, one thing I learned in those single gender groups is that you need to have instructors and leaders in those classrooms that are of the same gender as the students. So I would like to see how that goes. Because I think that there's great potential because you're expanding upon what they're doing versus in a regular school and a regular classroom. But unfortunately, it failed dismally at, at Odyssey.
Mrs. Andrews?
I had a chance to see this in action when we first started. It was impressive. And all of a sudden, it started being cut back. And when you start cutting back and not putting the resources where they need to be, you get what you get. It was one of those moments where you're like, "Oh, my God." It was watered down. But I just remember when it started, and I remember when it was going strong, and I went to those classes to see those students, it was the best. And when we're talking about working with the Council of Great City Schools, that emphasis is on black males, African-American males and females, the girls, Hispanics. This type of program here is what it's really all about. We need to go back and look at what we did here, how we lost track of it, and how we can put it back together. But I think a lot of it had to do with money and funding and, and people saying we can't do it. The children were there. We cut back the programs, and it was watered down. That's what I remembered about it. So I just think we need to go back and revisit what happened and how we can bring it back.
Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you. So I was looking at this thinking, how do I not remember when this went in? And now I realize it was before I was here. But I did actually have an opportunity to visit a very similar program to this in Dallas when I went there, I think in 2015. It was a, is that you, Wanda? No. And I thought it was a fabulous program. I was really excited, and I, I was hopeful that we could have something like that. And then I heard about this program, I thought it was. So I'm gonna take some time to look into this more, because it's something I really am interested in. I think it would be wonderful. I do want to caution us to avoid gendering anything in this district. I think it just, we walk down a dangerous road, where then you have a child who picks one side or the other, and it doesn't work. So I think we should do, you know, just children. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. And that's why you have an everybody academy for somebody, for students who don't identify as male or female, or those who do but want to be in a, in a co-ed course, right? That's fine. But I'm telling you what I know. So when we planned this years ago, we had conversations with schools all over this country that were black male academies, the Barack Obama Academy, there, I think one was the Thurgood Marshall Academy. There's one that I still remember the pictures year after year where the, the seniors would get, when they got accepted to college, their tie, where they would get a different colored tie, it seemed like it was red and gold, and then they got a gold tie when they got accepted to college. And they bragged about their 100% graduation rate, because they nurtured them, right? And, and, and they lifted them up instead of saying, you must, you must do things our way. They taught them how to, to walk the walk in this society as it exists, and they were successful. And so, we have to get, we have to get back to this. It, it is, and, and in fact, there was a breakout session at the recent Council of Great City Schools on single-gender programming. And in fact, somebody I have meetings with about that coming up, but there's a coalition of schools for boys of color. There's, there are people out there who are doing it, but Palm Beach County is not. Now, I don't know why Odyssey failed, but I could tell you that the community was very much engaged in, in Roosevelt, and, and it was always envisioned to be a partnership between the school district and the community. And it's as if we're trying to make it die on the vine. And at least as long as I'm here, I don't, I don't want to say those words. I would not let this dream die. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. That concludes our agenda. If there's no other business, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, second.
Not a motion. May I say something, Mr. Shaw?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a new principal that's on this agenda, and I need someone, she's in District 6, to, to introduce her and, and tell this board who she is, where she's going, and, and do something for us today about this.
You can go forward and introduce the new principal.
Yeah, we're gonna actually bring to the next board meeting all of the new principals who have not been introduced, an opportunity to come to the board meeting and speak at the regular board meeting like we have done in the past. So if it's okay with the board, we'll bring everybody at that time.
That's fine. We'll bring everybody at one time.
I'm pulling up which school.
Pure signing?
Do we?
Oh, okay.
We have a motion to adjourn. We need a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Andrews, motion second. Mrs. McQuinn, all in favor? All opposed? Motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned at 3:33.